What's the date today?
Hello?
Get around those.
Morning, Randy.
Bradshaw is here, so I know it's nine.
There's all the donuts. Any people come if you don't. You waiting on me? Okay, it is nine o'clock. Time for our Tuesday morning business meeting at this time. Dan York, where you at? Not chill? Mr. Van Ader, would you like to do the invitation share? Chairman, you created everybody in this room in this county and we're just help us do what we're supposed to do every day. And the thought when we're not doing what we're supposed to, the lessons on all three of the commissioners and help them learn their things.
Amen.
This time, Paul, many pledges lead. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and I pledge allegiance to the Constitution as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. Mister Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
I get that motion.
Motion and second. Public comment? Nothing? Motion passes.
I think.
Time's up. No.
Are we accepting the agenda?
Okay, all in favor?
Is there discussion on that?
All in favor?
Is there discussion on that?
Not on the agenda, but yeah, I guess we could. Yeah, go ahead. Ask your question. State your name for the record.
Dan Rose for the record, I make a comment to the agenda as the executive sessions where it lists the exemption code. But under Idaho code, it's also required to have the reason in inserting the word regarding before personnel. And the word regarding before records exempt and inserting the word regarding before hiring and personnel. Does not satisfy the reason for executive session. And so I would say that those three executive session items are lacking the notification necessary under code. And I would ask that if it can't be done today, then at least in the future, the reason be added in addition to the. How do we say? Claim of exemption under code. Thank you.
So, Mister Wilson, this was something I had asked you about, that the executive session descriptions are vague because at least explained in the public report we're doing. We didn't have a discussion on that, but we had an understanding that we could actually say what it is, just not in detail or good.
Well, first of all, although this might be something we would discuss in private, but okay, this is not so. I think this is something we can probably address publicly. The balance we want to strike, I guess, is to, we want to provide some level of detail to allow people to understand. Subject matter without giving away the reason that we go into executive session in the first place for confidentiality purposes. So if this is a point of emphasis for the new board, we can, we can definitely explore changing the language to accommodate those concerns. I just don't want to. We'll have to, like I said, strike a good balance to make sure that we're not saying too much to us so as to defeat the purpose of the executive session.
All right. At this time, an interesting motion.
I believe it's already been moved and seconded. I think you were just asked for a vote.
We adopted the order. All in favor on the order?
Aye.
Aye. Hey.
So District Two, I want to do kind of a commissioner report out where I explain what I've done, what I've worked on committees or workshops that I've participated with. In the hopes of being transparent with the community. So the first section that I have is we can review for January ninth. So we reviewed some updated to title eleven, twelve, and fourteen. I had a concern with eleven dash two eighteen regarding the definition of reconstruct. Planning did hear that issue and they are going to review the way that word is defined to make sure that it is. Not overburdening our county with having to request new building location that's based on the way that word was defined. We had some open meeting regarding updates to the comprehensive plan regarding wetlands hazardous special areas. The issue was table pending an additional community input to be heard again on February twenty second, two thousand twenty-three at one thirty. I offered to do a workshop with community members on their issues and concerns. And it was cleared by legal that that type of workshop would be okay to have. On the possible date for that community workshop, it will be the, and I got confirmation. So we'll just say that it will be on the twenty-fourth, which is next Tuesday after our morning meeting. So input from the community on miscellaneous workshops and meetings we met with U.S. Forest Service. They are well aware of our issues regarding our increased population on our forest land with litter. That was one of their concerns as well as a desire for more lawn enforcement. That was an issue that they brought up. Recreation is currently doing some cleanup in the winter, sanding off all of our docks to make sure that they're ready to go when we hit summertime. So thank you to all of those people that are working out in the cold. We had a local emergency planning committee meeting. There was a hazmat issue on the third over at Bonner General. It was immediately responded to. A root cause was completed and some education and training was given regarding the disposal and proper disposal of chemicals. So thank you to all of those who addressed that issue. Amtrak gave us an update and a presentation regarding their emergency response process. And Bob Howard, who runs the, that particular meeting is going to start updating their website so that the community knows what's going on. There's a lot that happens with our emergency plan, so that look forward to doing that. The commissioners participated with Idaho Association of Counties District One. New officers were elected, selected. And we discussed a bill that is in front of our legislature that would impact our county and it's in, it's specifically regarding our resolution that was passed of no public funds for abortion act. If a state, if a county or a city were to actually violate that, then there's a lack of. It was a lack of funds from sales tax, use tax revenues from local government. So I don't think Bonner County is going to be in risk of violating that. But that was the only thing that really impacted counties that was presented. I received two community inquiries over this past week. One of the inquiries was regarding our county and for use of vehicles. I sent that inquiry to our risk manager, Christian. I forwarded the message. I reviewed the policy and procedure and made some recommendations and he is doing the internal audit. Do you have any input to give to that?
So the audit, we did find what has been reported.
And then we'll report out. It's not inclusive of like law enforcement and EMS. That wasn't what the concern was. It was different types of use. And then community concern was received regarding open meeting policy. That inquiry from the community member was forwarded to our council, Bill Wilson, for review and response. He did request some specific examples from the sender and human resources and legal are reviewing extra meeting policy and procedure for public, for possible updates. For me as District Two Commissioner, I have two meetings that are coming up. We'll say the twenty-fourth for the workshop regarding the wetlands. And then on March second, the Old Town Community has requested a commissioner engagement meeting. So I will be at the Rotary Club from four to six P M. to address any community concerns. So my goal is to every week kind of give a summary of what I'm working on, what I'm doing so that there's transparency, so that you guys feel like you know what's going on from District Two Commissioner. And that's all I have for this week.
Mister Chairman, if I may. We have a lot of meetings in this county and I'm here to announce that we're going to have one more. And here's what this one is supposed to do. I've spoken with all elected officials in the county and starting in February. We're going to have a meeting of the electeds. The public is certainly invited and we look forward to them attending. And the purpose of this meeting will be amongst the nine elected officials of Bonner County, figure out where we're at. What we're all working on and how we can best serve Bonner County as we move forward. Details will be forthcoming, but I just wanted to extend an invitation to everybody and let them know this is in the works and I hope people will be there. I look forward to it. Thank you.
We have to do public.
Public comments, Chairman.
Oh, Cass, I got that in under agenda. Okay.
Rebecca Holland has her.
Good morning, Rebecca.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Rebecca Holland. I'm a resident of Selly Valley. Two things. One, I want to echo what Mister Rose was bringing up about the executive session. That there used to be in, in the agenda, more detail. They're all in years past. Now it's this very kind of clouded executive session under the code and that's pretty much it. I know there's something coming up on the nineteenth that gave just a teeny bit more review. It says that there's going to be a billing review. And I think there's an example where staff could let us know what you're reviewing. We're paying for this litigation and we know it's a very hefty budget. That has been increased year after year after year. So that's something that I'd like to point out. And reason I also, I wanted to speak quickly was that I wanted to list, after listening last week, is thank Asia for asking for more public input. On decisions, particularly on land use from the public. I know there's a lot to unpack from the previous commission and there's been some bad decisions and we need to see that come forward. And again, when that goes into litigation, there should be some detail. There should be notice to the public that that's the subject matter that's being dealt with. Not this kind of this cloud that I would, would call it. I understand that in the litigation stuff, you know, it cannot be personal names, but again, just giving some subject matter to it as it used to be in the past. Thank you. And the only other thing I'd say is when for those of us, it looks like, wow, there's like nine people listening from on Zoom. For people to speak into the mic, even at the, at the table there, we need those mics a little closer or something. So thank you. Thanks for your time.
Good morning, George Gergen for the record. During the comprehensive planning process, I wasn't shy in voicing my concerns. In particular about the natural resources component and in particular about the natural resources committee's input on the comprehensive plan. I would like to ask if you all could make sure that the county website is updated with the natural resources committee meetings, dates, and times. And after a public records request for recordings about the natural resources committee, I, I got some audio files that were basically incomprehensible. So specifically talking about speaking into the microphone, I'd like to make sure that if there's going to be a public meeting like that, that people actually either hopefully it's video recorded. But if it's only going to be audio recorded, to make sure that people speak into the mic so that we can understand what they're saying. Thank you.
All right. This time I'd like to make a motion to elect Luke Amen as vice chairman. Oh, we got to do the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to elect Luke Amen as vice chair.
I'll second the motion.
We'll call the.
Yes. Morning.
Jeff Lindsay, EMS chief for the record. I've got a medical director consent and dispatch agreement with the West Pondory Fire District. Attached medical director consent and dispatch agreement are for the fire protection districts who wish to be considered collaborative agencies within Bonner County during the fiscal year F Y two thousand twenty-three. And this would be specifically West Pondory Fire Protection District.
Do I move that we accept the medical director dispatch agreement?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
You have, you have to let.
Can I have a discussion on that?
Sorry, you got to give.
All pros, all neutral, paper up, any of the above, motion passes. Facilities.
Good morning.
Teddy Lipton, Director of Public Works for the record. I have a two thousand or facility. It has a two thousand five Chevrolet Astro van that is no longer needed by my department. You tend to, the attached resolution declares that the reference to vehicle is to be transferred to Bonner County Motor Pool.
I move to approve the surplus equipment as approved by legal unauthorized facilities to surplus a two thousand five Chevrolet Astro van and transfer it to the Bonner County Motor Pool.
Number is.
Oh. Zero one.
All right, all in favor? Hold on to that discussion.
Yeah, Fisher, Fisher Bradshaw, typically after it's been moved and seconded, we'll just ask for some public comment before we try for a vote. I mean, if that doesn't have, it's not required by law, but I guess that's just kind of our practice.
Has to go through legal first.
Yeah, you got to go through all the bill there. All right. Motion passes. Road and Bridge.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Thaw, Bonner County Road and Bridge Director for the record. Before you, the first item I have is our road restrictions resolution. Bonner County Road and Bridge requests approval of the attached resolution that authorizes the Road and Bridge to post. Weight and hauling limits on Bonner County roads. Attaches the annual resolution for road restrictions in accordance. The Title T, Chapter Three Frost Law, weight and hauling limits. Road and Bridge will monitor. Temperature, moisture, frostiness, and road conditions in order to implement the road restrictions to minimize damage to the roadways during spring break.
Based on the information before, I say move to approve resolution number twenty-three dash two that authorized the Road and Bridge Department to put road restrictions, size, weight, and hauling limits on county roads for two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second. Motion passes.
Chairman.
All in favor? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Bonner County Road and Bridge, item number two.
All right. This one is for the fiscal twenty-four local highway safety improvement program out on the Spirit Lake Road for the Spirit Lake Cut Off Curves. In January twenty twenty-two, Road and Bridge submitted a local highway safety improvement program. Known as LCIP, Safety Grant Application requesting funding for improvements to curves on Spirit Lake Cut Off. And we were selected and awarded for one point five million in funding. We have seen a trend on the roadway department departures accidents, including two fatal accidents in the last five years. At corners which are too sharp for the forty-five mile an hour speed limit, especially in adverse conditions. This grant project would realign the sharpest of the corners. To substantially increase its radius and guardrails to the outside edge of the T-sharp as ninety-degree corners and improve. The curve ahead and Chevron signage around all the corners in the corridor. Including progressibility lighted radar activated Chevrons. That will increase driver awareness of the approaching sharp curves after a long straightaway. LTAC has forwarded the attached state and local agreement. For the board's approval, this agreement would commit us to the project. An immediate match payment of six thousand dollars would need to be made. Which would come from zero zero two nine thousand grant county match, which we have a remaining balance of three hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred dollars. The total project cost is estimated to be around two million sixty-seven thousand. Of which the maximum award through the LCIP program is one point five. Bonner County would pay seven point three four percent of the match of the one point five million, which would be around a hundred and ten thousand one hundred. And cover any additional cost over the one point five from Bonner County funds for a total anticipated contribution. Of up to six hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred dollars, most of which would be paid in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
Mister Chairman, I move the Board of Bonner County Commissioners approve the state and local agreement key number two, three, eight, eight, zero for the Spirit Lake Curve Safety Project and pay the initial six thousand dollar match.
Doug Patterson for the record. I live real close to Spirit Lake Cut Off and I drive on it on a very, very regular basis and I certainly understand the tight corners being a problem. I even knew some of the people that died in those accidents. That said, the, the lit signs for, for the directionals, if you would please enumerate the price of those signs versus the regular sign saying curve ahead for me, please?
I can't actually give you an actual price on those signs right now because it hasn't even went out for design or come back with any cost on those signs as of right now. The, the LED signs we looked at for our stop signs, I want to say they're around twenty-six hundred to three thousand. I would imagine they're going to be close to that.
Versus the price of, of regular signs?
Yeah, they are, they actually do flash and they flash faster as the traffic's oncoming. So they're, they're going to be a little bit pricey.
I, I, I didn't understand your answer in dollars and cents and the cost of the existence of regular signs.
Probably around twenty-six hundred if I had to guess. I can't give you an actual answer on that right now.
No, to say regular.
That's, that's certainly not the price of the regular stop signs that you had, which I expected to be close to.
Yeah, they're not a stop sign, Doug, and they're about half the size.
So I would expect them to be cheaper than the stop signs.
It should be around twenty-six hundred. Like I said, I can't give you an actual price on that because we haven't received a price on it. I'm guessing at this point.
Okay, well, thank you.
I, I was thinking you wanted to know what the actual cost of the actual lighted sign was. I apologize for that.
I, I would have preferred that answer, yes, but, but an estimation based on the stop sign is what?
A normal sign's going to run, you know, they're thirty, forty bucks plus a, a post is running right around fifteen bucks right now. They're, they're pretty cheap. Versus a lighted sign.
Ah, thank you.
Miss Crawford. Reg, you out there? You're muted. Got your hand up. There you are.
Thank you. Reg Crawford, Semple, Idaho. I actually came to this meeting to meant to talk on item one and there was no discussion open. So I'm hoping when you're done with this item, we could revisit that. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Trisha Bullen. Can I ask where the? I said Trisha Bullen. Um, where's the money coming from? Is LSAT federal or state or?
Well, they're local highway. They actually have money that comes from the state distributed to them that they can distribute. So LTAC, they're a local highway. They actually have money that comes from the state distributed to them that they can distribute out to all the local highway jurisdictions. And we have to apply for those monies whenever we want anything like a project like this to go through. That's where we actually go to try and get these kind of grants.
Okay. Is there any strings attached to the money?
Just what we are required for in that.
Okay, but besides that, there's no other things you have to do?
Typically any other strings attached to it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? All right. You got first and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And H R. R, are you ready?
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Pinkerton, H R Director, for the record. Uh, we have one item for today and that is, uh, requests to recruit for the following positions. Uh, for Planning Department, uh, we are changing a planning, a planner one vacancy, uh, to be a planning tech position. And for the public defenders, we have a deputy public defender of, a request to recruit for.
Neither of these are new positions, correct?
Correct.
So these have already been budgeted for the general public to be aware.
Uh, the planner, uh, the planning tech has not, uh, that is just a change. So what was approved in the budget ten one was a planner one position. But in reeval, reevaluating, um, the work, uh, it would be better suited to have a planning tech, which is actually a grade lower than the planner one, so cost seven.
So it's potentially shrinking that exposure to cost for the county versus expanding.
Correct.
Thank you.
During the discussion regarding this, I thought we were going to watch to see if we needed to recruit for the vacant position, but that we really wanted to switch that. Is there enough?
Uh, that's not what I understood from.
There's two vacant, isn't there two vacant positions in your department? And I thought the decision was that we were going to change one of the titles essentially and slide someone into it and then watch to see if we needed.
That, that is correct. There are two planner one positions. He's holding on the planner one, one of the planner ones. And then the other planner one, we're changing to a planning tech and he wants to fill that position. It's kind of, uh, chess.
Okay.
But good question.
I hereby make a motion based on the information before us, a move to approve, committing approval of a revised position and recruitment for planning tech, planning department and deputy public defender for public defender's office effective January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three.
I second the motion.
First and second. Comment? Motion passes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Right, uh. Christian. What risk was there? Always. There's always a risk when you pull up here.
Hi, Christian Zoslin for the record. Uh, Bonner County is requesting approval to provide a three hundred dollar per month vehicle allowances to Deborah Belly, who's a prosecutor, office attorney. And this proposed allowance has been reviewed and recommended by prosecutor, auditing, human resources and risk management.
Is this a common practice in the county at this time, Christian?
Yes, we have about, uh, six or so, um, people with the allowance, a little more than that.
And just for me is this is, uh, week two and the first one of these that I've seen, we do this because it's cheaper than giving them.
Hundred percent, uh, Mr. Bradshaw had it corrected. Saves the county money. Um, it's a lot less than a mileage rate or using a county vehicle would be by far.
So this is an effective use of public funds.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you. I hereby make a motion that based on the information before us, I move to approve a three hundred dollar monthly vehicle allowance payment for prosecuting attorney Deborah Belly effective January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Second motion.
We have first and second, public comment? None? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, it is nine thirty and we were done with meetings. So we'll reset for five minutes and then we'll come back into.
That's where.